Twenty-two, regular meeting of the village board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Markarth. Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
And President Byrne has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
I second that.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. We are called to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any citizens wishing to address the board?
I'm here this evening to introduce myself to all of you. I am currently running for the, or I'm the candidate running for Lake County Treasurer. My name's Paula McGuire. And this came about because I contacted the mayor's office and asked if I could have a moment of time with the mayor and was told that I could come here this evening to introduce myself to you all. I am a resident of Lake County now for over 25 years. I'm going to be brief with what I have to say. The reason why I'm running for county treasurer is that the office fits who I am as a person. I have a lifetime of experience in the field of accounting. That amounts to over 30 years of experience in the areas of insurance, banking, and financial investment services. I have been married to my husband of 34 years. We've raised four children and currently reside in Green Oaks. With that said, I just wanted to kind of let you all know that I'm out here to do what it is that needs to be done for the community and take into account any concerns that you might have currently with the office. And that would be it.
Your name is again, I'm sorry?
Paula McGuire.
Paula McGuire.
Yes. And I am a CPA, sorry about that.
You were on the golf course for the GLMV?
I was, yes. Yes, I was.
GM, I was, GM, GLV?
Yeah, GLMV.
Yeah, we met.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Nice to have made all of your acquaintances.
Thank you.
And have a wonderful evening.
Okay, thank you for coming. Any other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay, then if not, are there any, any speaking parts at all by staff? No?
Unfinished business, we have some, and new business.
Okay. All right, then we'll jump right to omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through K?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second? Any comments, questions, anything somebody wants polled? No, all right, then roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, unfinished additional business. Approval and passage of resolution 2022-026, a resolution authorizing the signing of an agreement for operating concessions at the Vernon Hills Athletic Complex by Bobo's City Euros Incorporated?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall from our last committee of the whole meeting on August 16th, we had a petitioner present a concept for operation of the V-HAC concession stand by Bobo's Euros of Vernon Hills. At that time, staff was directed to draft a license agreement for consideration by the village board. We have that enclosed for your review this evening. Some highlights of some of the terms of that agreement. It will cover the fall 2022 and spring 2023 seasons as kind of a test trial. If at that time, both parties agree that this is a good, a good relationship and working out, there's an option to extend that into the fall 2023 and spring of 2024 seasons. The license fee for each season is $1,500 per season, so that would be paid at the start of each season. And then we have the normal Lake County Health Department regulations, certificates of insurance requirements, et cetera. So the petitioners here this evening, if you have any questions, otherwise we'd be looking for a, a motion to recommend approval of this agreement.
Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Because this looks like a pretty straightforward concession agreement, that?
We'd already discussed it.
Yeah.
Seems straightforward.
Did you have anything you want to say? Yeah.
No, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm ready to answer.
No, I, I think this is worth, give me a try.
I'm very happy you'll give it a try.
Yeah. Okay, in, in that case, is there a motion to approve resolution 2022-026?
Exactly what you said, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. That was all under unfinished, right? We moved to new business?
Correct, we do have two items under new business. Those are really there just because they have not yet been brought before the board and we just wanted to provide an opportunity for any background in case anyone has any questions on the two items. Deputy Chief Selak is here to answer any questions, if the board has any.
Okay, you want to do them one at a time or together?
Yes, one at a time.
One at a time, okay. The first one is approval and passage of ordinance 2022-094 and ordinance amending chapter one of the village code of the village Vernon Hills of Illinois to create certain classification of offenses for violations to the village code. Does anybody have any questions? You, you read all this.
What would those be, what are those classifications?
So it's my understanding that these were recommended to us by our local prosecutors, so...
They would ensure that we would have both a mechanism to attain some restitution, which we currently don't have in our process.
That's the next one.
I'm sorry. And then, yeah, and then the, the current one being that there'd be some responsibility associated with violation of these codes. You know, I have to advise that, having worked on this, I'm sorry, I was just kind of standing in tonight. My understanding is the attorney was the kind of driving force behind it. So that's all the information I have currently.
Yeah, I, I can jump in here. Carmen worked on this with the police department and the prosecutor. And the first one relates to allowing for the prosecution of individuals who cause, allow, permit, aid, abet, suffer, or conceal a violation. So in answer to your question, trustee Schenk, this particular code provision allows for prosecution for really any wrongful conduct, which would include not only the conduct, but aiding and abetting such conduct. So theft, battery, any sort of wrongful conduct that's listed in our code. This allows for the additional prosecution for aiding and abetting. And the reason the prosecutor recommended this was to allow for more area to negotiate pleas. In other words, to, to go to a lower offense, if that's appropriate. So this comes at the recommendation of Mr. Weiner, their office, the village prosecutor. So it really, the answer to your question is this relates to a number of criminal conduct.
Well, and it also, it also falls right in line with the state criminal code too, correct?
Exactly. It's based, the, the language comes from the state criminal code. Gives the prosecutor a little more leeway to, to negotiate pleas if need be.
So, so currently or without this ordinance being passed, the same sort of thing would happen, but it would have to happen through the regular court system instead of our?
We, we don't, we don't have a, a local ordinance that says this. So if they were to try to prosecute a ticket for this violation, it would have to be under state law. And typically, that's generally doesn't occur for local, local violations. So this allows latitude to negotiate on local ordinance violations. It, it really gives another tool to the prosecutor's toolbox.
So does it like separate, like, I know maybe at the state level, a misdemeanor versus a felony, say on theft, is it probably a dollar amount? And does that give us, you know, if there's a theft of less than that dollar amount, they get to decide if it's like a different classification?
Well, we aren't writing felony violations under our, under our code. We, we can't. You know, we can, we can prosecute for misdemeanors.
Yeah.
So it, that's a little bit of a different situation.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? If not, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-094?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second, any additional comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Second one is approval and passage of ordinance 2022-095 and ordinance amending section 1-11 of the village code of the village of Vernon Hills, Illinois to allow for restitution for violations of the village code.
I can take this one as well. Currently, the village code does not contain a provision that would require an individual to, to make or pay restitution. And what this does is provide that language and it allows a village prosecutor to seek restitution from an individual in a circuit court proceeding. We have it currently, we have, we're allowed to do that at the administrative level, but in the circuit court, we don't have that language. So this would allow prosecution to seek rest, prosecutor to seek restitution from an individual in a circuit court proceeding on a village code violation. The code amendment will give the prosecutor the option to resolve cases in a manner that makes victims whole. So what this relates to is the prosecutor seeking pecuniary relief for a victim. I think a theft is probably the easiest example to provide. The judge, if the prosecutor seeks this sort of relief, the judge now has an option to order restitution to the victim where the judge deems it appropriate. This comes also at the request of the village prosecutor as well as the chief of police.
So, so once again, tell me if we were not to pass this, how would they go about it under the current?
If we were, the way this works, we couldn't. So if we write a village ordinance violation that's prosecuted through our administrative adjudication program, which is here, we can seek restitution. Sometimes village code violations get taken to the circuit court. Higher level type violations. Currently, there is no ability to seek restitution under our code because we don't have that language. So we couldn't. So the judge would be free to, you know, issue a sentence, make a finding of guilty or not guilty after a trial, determine what sentence is appropriate. But the judge could not require that the, the individual make restitution. This language allows the judge to do that. So we're without that ability at this point.
So that's only because it's a village code violation versus state law violation or some other type of violation that a judge couldn't force someone to make?
That's correct.
To pay restitution for?
That's correct. This relates solely to a village code violation brought in the circuit court of Lake County. That's all this relates.
Brought by the village to the circuit court of Lake County.
Correct.
And again, brings us in line with state criminal code, right?
Right, and again, another tool for the prosecutor to work with to, to help a victim, essentially.
So I would imagine all other municipalities that have adjudication locally as we do have this type of language already?
Most do, and not all. I, I would say a lot do. This, our code was lacking the language and the prosecutor picked out these two sections. Our office helped write the ordinance that would, that they were seeking.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve ordinance 2022-095?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, anything else under new business communication? Trustee Markarth.
Yes, I just saw this over the weekend and so I wanted to bring it up. Some regards to soliciting on the streets, roads, I guess Best Buy. And someone in Facebook, I guess Dear Path, ended up stating, why don't we have something like this? Apparently in Gurnee, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it, I don't have anything to show up on the screen. But it has a sign that says, keep the change, say no to panhandling. And then it says contribute to the, in fact, contribute to soliciting. And what it has is an X through it. I don't know if, if we should do something like this. Again, people are needy, some people will end up finding that it's not appropriate. I don't know, but I wanted to bring it up and...
I thought we'd already discussed this, that our more recent panhandling?
We have discussed it and what it is, is that people have the right to do so.
Right.
How I look at it, I think they do have the right to do so. And someone said that they were soliciting Best Buy. Well, if I were the store owner or the manager, what you do is you shoo them out. I was just bringing this up as a point because some people like it, some people don't, and I don't know.
The question, what exactly are you asking for?
If we should post signs up for no solicitation.
But is it our responsibility?
Not.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, I don't see that as our responsibility.
I don't want to get into that.
I heard a door at home say no solicitors.
No. I'm just bringing it up. I personally, I, our police force has enough things to do than do this. Saw it, so I thought I'd bring it up.
So it was six months, nine months ago that we passed our?
Right, we passed an ordinance and we have to allow panhandling on public roadways, public sidewalks. It's a First Amendment protected activity. But when you get into the private shopping centers like Best Buy, the landlords can impose a rule and put signage up that no panhandling is allowed and that would be treated as trespassing. Perhaps Jeff could speak to this. The police department would then get involved if called by a landlord to come and explain the, the rule at that particular center. Once an individual has been warned and the police have to return again, I think then they're in a position to write a trespassing ticket.
That's correct. And so we have been working with management companies at a lot of the strip malls to educate them as to what kind of signage that they are allowed to put up. And it is my understanding that there are a couple different of the strip malls that are going to put up signage if they haven't done so already. Deputy Chief Hollybets is working on that project with, you know, our community partners. But that would be our typical course of action. We would go educate first, advise them of the ordinance or advise them of, you know, the signage, tell them, you know, what their options were. And then on a, on a subsequent offense, we would come and then we would take appropriate action, whether it be, you know, typically a citation.
If I recall, the pan, when we talked about, I think it was November, if it, there was a safety concern, like on Milwaukee and 60 or Lakeview and 60, you were able to address that as a safety concern to remove them from the area even though, because the safety concern overrides.
It's in the ordinance itself in terms of which roadways are not allowed to participate. So that's Milwaukee and 60.
We would provide them alternatives, right? So not preventing them from engaging in activity, but just preventing them from being those specific locations due to the hazardous road conditions.
And have you encountered this since November in those areas where, hey, not safe here, move two blocks north or something?
We have, we definitely have. I would say, I don't know that we've issued, I'm, I'm trying to think how many have come across my desk. Maybe a, a couple of citations were actually issued, typically the verbal warning. And then we provide them some, an informational handout as to, you know, other locations that they can solicit safely. And that usually resolves the issue.
And, and do they disperse or do they relocate?
I'd say the, most of the times they disperse.
Have you, have you seen these people acting as repeat offenders in certain areas? It seems like on, especially on 60, just south of where Whole Foods is, right at the intersection there with, with Milwaukee, it tends to be a gathering place.
Yeah, and I would say for the most part, I, I think we are getting, we, we aren't getting too many repeat offenders. No, certainly I'm sure that some of the patrol officers that are running across them would be issuing then citations. Sometimes a little hard to track because they don't want to provide any information or, you know, have a picture taken, things of that nature. But certainly if patrol officers run across them before, then we'll be able to take enforcement action. But usually it's, it is an issue that you're seeing in a lot of jurisdictions in the area. I think there are a lot of communities that are dealing with it and I think there are a lot of people engaged in the activity. So you, you're not seeing as many repeat offenders as you might think.
Are they not required to allow you to take a picture if they're panhandling in a public location that's a violation of an ordinance?
You know, at, at a certain point, you have to, you know, decide whether the juice is worth the squeeze, right? If somebody's willing to leave the location and, and, you know, do so in an orderly fashion, us trying to rustle over a photograph doesn't make a lot of sense a lot of times.
Well, I get that. It's just a question of whether or not they keep coming back and then if it's a different patrol officer each time, then you could just send the picture to?
The guy's pretty good about knowing who's out there and who they see and, you know. So like I said, we, we've addressed a couple return offenders. But for the most part, it is, it's just, you know, it is an activity that is just, it's become very popular.
Okay. Anything else under new business communication? I had one thing I wanted to comment on. We had the Legion Golf outing and it went very well. And I just wanted to compliment trustee Oppenheim for bringing us the idea of the banners and, and Assistant Village Manager Petrillo and Mr. Brown's Polk Works people for putting them up. The banners looked great. They were very, very well received. And I'm hoping in the future, when we do that and do it out on Route 60, it'll be something that people will receive as well as these were. They just, it's a really great thing, so thank you for bringing us that idea.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn and go to the committee of the whole?
So may.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Back to you.
All right, I'd like to call it to order the September 6, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Markarth.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
President Byrne has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
Once again, I'd like to nominate trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the committee of the whole.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. First item is approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of August 16th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Epstein.
President, President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Only item on tonight is the Carson's redevelopment phase two.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Cook. I thought if, if the board's okay with it, we'll let the petitioner present the plans of the Carson's redevelopment. And then I can review with you what the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation was regarding the development. And again, before you tonight is a consideration to amend a special use permit to allow a mixed-use residential development, to approve certain variations from the zoning code and the sign code, to approve site plan, landscape plan, and architectural elevations, and finally to approve a platte subdivision. That's what's, that's what'll be contained in the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Separate from that is also a request for certain variations from the building code amendments for Vernon Hills. But again, if, if the board is in agreement, we'll let the petitioner present the plans and then again, we can review the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. So I'll pass it off to the, to the petitioner.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My name's Sam Whitebread. I'm with Centennial Real Estate. We are the owner and operator of Hawthorne Shopping Center and as well the master developer. Tonight, we're here with our co-partners and development partnership group from Focus Atlantic. We'd like to share with you the, the updated, new and improved vision for multifamily phase two. As I kind of walk through the first couple slides here, I'll quickly turn it over to Focus to, to get into some of the details of the, the project itself. But what I would like to share and call your attention, I think most of, most of the group here is familiar with the development plans at Hawthorne. These have changed slightly from what you may have seen or had been previously approved in the past. But not just changed, we think in addition to evolving, have significantly improved along the way. Before you is the, the original configuration of what was previously approved. The arrow on the screen points to the original location of phase two, which was on the southeast corner of the campus. The new location of multifamily phase two brings the project more inboard to the shopping center and is more closely located to what you previously knew as the area where Carson's, the Carson's Department Store had existed. And this is a somewhat of a, kind of a side-by-side showing the, the prior approval compared to what the master plan currently reflects.
And while we're on this, I want to make one thing real clear that it was, phase one was what, 300 and change units and this was 250.
Correct.
Five, right?
Three eleven.
And when phase two rotated, the previously approved was vacated. This is not an additional, because there seemed to be some confusion about that, this does not bring the total to 800. This is, this is just a, a shifting of the total and the total is staying the same.
That's correct. The total does go up slightly. The original phase two shown on the previous screen was 249 units. And then the new phase two bumped up to 256 units. There's a slight increase of six units.
Yeah, but, but not an additional 250-some units. This is just?
That's correct.
The other one was vacated, okay.
Correct, yes, understood. Still, still the phase two project, just in a, a different location within the campus. So the, the slide before you shows the, the overlay and, and the nature in which it's located, where Carson's had previously existed. The, the project does require some adjustment of the mall movement of Dave and Buster's. For those who are familiar with the, the current state of the mall campus, the Carson's building has been fully demolished to make way for this development opportunity. And phase two as such nestles or better connects to the shopping center itself. And then there is a, which as we present, get into the plans and the details of such, a plaza, a well-appointed plaza, which we're very excited about, which, which acts as the hub or somewhat of the central point that ties together phase one, phase two, the retail district and the rest of the campus in a, in kind of a more, more thoughtful, meaningful way. With that, I'd like to turn it over to, to Vic Howell with Focus Development to walk you through some of the details of phase two.
All right, thanks, Sam. Thank you all for having us here tonight. As Sam mentioned, I'm Vic Howell with Focus. We are the co-developers with Centennial and Atlantic. With me tonight is Justin Pelay with Focus as well and our partners at Atlantic are not here with us this evening. I'm going to get into introducing our design team and let them run you through this, this new portion of phase two, but then also what's happening at the mall and the plaza. But for a moment, I want to call out something and trustee Cook mentioned, one of the things I wanted to call out was the replacement of the previous scope. But I want to speak to a little bit of why we, we elected to move that phase two over. But I want to speak to a little bit of why we, we elected to move that Phase Two over. As, as everyone's aware, the current Phase One is well under construction and, and it's working well. I think when Centennial offered us this opportunity to rethink how Phase Two worked, as, as they were looking at removing Carson's and everything that went along with that, in the new mall plaza, we saw an opportunity really to, to front that new plaza. And if this mouse works, to really take the previous plan where we front the plaza on both sides with retail. Now that we have this larger, more graceful, more gracious extended plaza, there's, there's an opportunity similarly to take what we used to have as Phase Two, move that over and, and continue to, to front that plaza with the retail space, making it more active. Obviously, ground floor retail on all sides, a lot more space within the plaza space as well. And rather than look at, at a sea of parking from this new plaza to 60, we obviously have this nice, beautiful building here as, as the new Phase Two. It's, it's an outdoor room that's a lot more active. We'll have those Instagrammable moments and the design team can, can certainly march through those. And, and obviously pedestrian-friendly. We think it's a much better location for that Phase Two project. And then again, as, as I mentioned, I was going to speak to the original Phase Two of 249 units. It's now moved over. We have a max of 255 units in its new location. And then the density is the same. The only addition obviously is we now have retail, about 33,000 square feet of retail that I mentioned fronting that new plaza. So.
You mentioned a second ago, you said all sides on, on Phase Two here. Is it three sides, not the south?
It's, where's my mouse? So the retail, it doesn't read as well on my screen. I think it probably reads better on yours. Sort of wraps the, the north and west side of this Phase Two building. So that is to say really the, the furthest southern extent of this plaza, except for obviously the very end of it is lined with that retail all the way around. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then the east and south is all the residential, purely residential.
Correct, correct. The east and south is purely residential for four stories. We have some different interpretations, which again, we'll have the architects run through, how we express that a little bit differently on the different sides. So getting to that, we'll, we'll dive right in. Just real quick as an introduction to the design teams. Kimberly Horn, who's worked with us obviously throughout on, on the Phase One projects and throughout. Natalie Moore is here tonight representing their team. Our design architects for the mixed-use portion of the project are SKNI. Andy Tsikowski and Michael Sisco have a lot of experience. They actually worked on the, the Atworth across the street. So very familiar obviously with, with the area and then we're excited to have them on the team to present this information tonight. Five Five Design, Nick Igle is here representing their team doing the retail architecture and he'll speak to that tonight. And then finally Clark Condon, Brendan Cloney is here, who's going to speak to the landscape for both the, the plaza side and, and the mixed-use portion of the project. So I will turn it over to Andy and Mike to run through this.
Awesome. Thanks, Vic. Hi, I'm Andy Tsikowski and my partner, Michael Sisco, is here from SKNI Architects. So we've been working on this for, for quite a while now and been working with the planning, with, with Mike and his, and his crew and, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We came, we're here, I guess it was in May, we had our last meeting. And we, they were very supportive and they had a couple of suggestions towards the building. And so we worked with them and collaborated with them and have several meetings and kind of worked through some of the design issues. As you can, going back to your point, this is sort of a, a tale of two, two buildings, if you will. We kind of called this an ambiguous building where it's sort of, it front, it, the, the shape of the building, the form of the building reinforces the urbanism around it. So obviously if you, this is sort of the, the ground floor plan and, and the red is the retail. And that faces this new wonderful outdoor plaza, the new reconstructed mall. And then it transitions sort of around the parking. The parking is completely embedded within the building, so you don't see it. There's structured parking. It's sort of like, it, it houses both the retail, some retail parking and all the residential parking that's with, is within the structured parking. When you can see the two entrances, one on the east and one on the west. And then the fingers, the yellow to the south is essentially the residential. So that's four-story residential. And that's the piece that we kind of had issues with, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can walk you through those, those images. But this is essentially the, the lay of the land. And going just conceptually, we designed this as, it's, it's a very large building. It has many frontages and we really wanted to break it down and make it very pedestrian-friendly, you know, both to, you know, the, the retail shoppers, but also a very welcoming building to the, to the residents of the building. And so we essentially deconstructed the building into several different pieces. And when you see the architecture, the renderings, you'll, you'll recognize them. This northeast corner, sort of the, the mercantile pavilion, it has its own distinct architecture. It houses retail on the plaza as well as the residential. The blue is the amenity. That's the lobby, the mailroom, the package. So this is the front door of the building is, is to the, on the, on that northeast corner. Then we have this little pedestrian paseo. So when shoppers can come, park on the first floor, migrate to this, this corner, then walk through this, we call it the paseo. You walk out, then you arrive at this space. You're in the plaza. There's hopefully lots of shops and restaurants and activity, maybe summer concerts. And then the building sort of wraps the northern to the west. And this is sort of the, the, the mixed-use portion of the building. We have the ground floor retail and, and the apartments above. And then as you get, once it goes past the, the drive-alts to the east and the west, it transitions to more of the residential character. And that was really where we had the issues and Planning and Zoning had some suggestions. And we took those suggestions, collaborated with them, and we'll, we'll walk you through those slides in a moment. I think most of you have seen this presentation before, at least within, to a certain extent. But these are the upper floors. Obviously, once you go above the retail, it's residential all the way around. There's a nice amenitized courtyard in the middle with the, with the pool over the, the retail parking. And then, so yeah, this is sort of the view of the north, the northeast corner. This is that mercantile piece that I was talking about. So this, this pavilion sort of fronts the, the new square. If you're up on the, on the hill, and I think Nick, some of Nick's images will, will allude to that, some of the aerials. When you're standing up by the, the movie theater, there's going to be a series of stairs that cascade down into this park. And this little pavilion will sort of frame that space. It'll, it'll receive you on the other opposite end. And that, that little dark tower to the left is the residential, that's the residential lobby. So that's where all the residents will know you. That's the front door of the building, essentially. The, the black tower on the left? Yeah, so the base of that's the front door of the lobby. And then as you go up, the residence, we, we are programming the front of the building to be amenities. So we're imagining a sort of a, a three, hopefully four-season room that can open up in the summertime and have that interaction between the residential, the residents of the building. There'll be a clubroom space that overlooks the plaza. So, you know, as the, as the, the plaza gets activated and, and maybe there's special events, there, there's a nice interaction between this building and, and that, and that plaza. And then we have, we do have the material boards here for, for the project. But this mercantile piece, we're seeing essentially a metal-clad building that comes down and rests on a dark brick base. Obviously, we have the, this is sort of the, one of the iconogra-, the icons of the project with that Hawthorne sign on top. And then as you transition along the, the northern frontage street that faces the park, we transition into these red brick pavilions and these dark panel pavilions. And then below, they sit on, there's two stories of residential that sits on essentially a double-height retail space. And that retail space is envisioned to be flexible, change over time as retail tenants come and go. But obviously, what's the, really, the key thing here is that you have two-sided retail. You have this great outdoor room. There's retail on the mall. There's going to be retail on this building. It can be activated on all, on all, all sides. This is envisioned as a really rich red brick building with dark panel accents. And we have those, those red bricks here as well. That little, I mentioned that little paseo, that sort of muraled area to the left, on the left side of that image, is where the, you would then go back, if you parked here, you would come out of this space and then you could activate and communicate between the parking and, and the retail through this, this space. And it, it's wide enough that it can accept, you know, tables and chairs and outdoors, outdoor dining. This is the building as it wraps around towards the mall. This is actually the diagonal from the new mall entrance that Nick will be able to present in a second. This is sort of that angle. This is the northwest corner. Again, you can see the, sort of the corner pieces are these red brick pieces that span over with these panelized pavilions with, you can see the balconies. We have a lot of balconies on this building. A lot of the units will have, you know, the outdoor space, the activation. And, and what's nice here is in, again, you can see the retail will have total flexibility sort of between those pavilions to change over time. And again, these are the materials, sort of the, the dark, different shades of, 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 of panel, different shades of gray. And then the piece that we, we kind of really met with, with P&amp;Z on was this, the south piece, the residential piece. The comments that we had was very institutional. It felt, it was kind of interesting. We were kind of debating in our head what, what they meant, but they were saying that it felt like something that you would see in Evanston. And I take that hopefully as a compliment, but at the same time, we understand that it felt sort of academic. It was very, it felt tall, I guess, because of the, the way that the panels were between the, the, sort of the legs of the building were three stories tall. We intended this to kind of break it down. Instead of being a long building, to have these little pavilions with three- and four-story reeds to give it more of a townhouse cadence. And I think they appreciated that, but they felt like something was missing. And that these tall, three-story legs of white brick felt a little too much. This is the residential south side, facing 60, yeah. Exactly. This is what we proposed and they generally liked the massing and generally liked the, the, the ups and downs of the building. There's four, three-story pieces, four-story pieces, even though it is all four-story, but the brick is three and four stories. And these are the material boards for that. So again, here's sort of that, this is the original rendering that we, we shared in May. And then we went back and worked with them and the feedback, this is sort of where it landed. And, and they were, and this is sort of the collaboration with, with your P&amp;Z board. And we added bay windows. We actually raised the brick base. There's a dark brick base. We raised its, we actually took out the, some of the dark panel and added more masonry to the project. And then added the, sort of the center rows of windows became punch windows instead of sort of that three-story reading that you saw before. And then the big thing is really the bay window. Oh, you want to compare it? Yeah, sure. Sure, sure. Yeah. So you can see this is, it's really the, I keep going back to the three-story reading, but I think that was really, it, it really stuck, I think, in, in, in the panel's mind that it, it just felt too rigid and they wanted more variety.
What I would buy them saying institutional is it, it looks too much like a building that you would find on a school campus as opposed to residential, that kind of a thing or?
I think that was the, the idea, that, yeah, that it felt a little institutionalized. And that was one of the comments that was made.
Yeah.
And, and so this is where we, we-
This looks a lot more residential.
Exactly.
If I may, this is, excuse me, this is what the, the Committee of the Whole is being requested to consider. And I'll just interject really quick here. They, the, the, the commission did have, raise the, the comments that, that the petitioner shared with you. They then responded to those comments and that's what this elevation represents to you. In addition to the features that you outline, there's also, if you look at the top of the building, there's a cornice detail there that adds a lot of interest with that brown coping. And that same detail carries through to the two-story box bays, which are brown fiber cement below that. Subsequent to these redrawings, we had the petitioner meet informally with the two Planning and Zoning Commissions, who happen to be the architects on the commission, who are the ones that raised these issues. They looked at the revised drawings that you're looking at tonight and they confirmed that this did address the concerns they had at the night of the public hearing. So I just wanted to be clear that this is the rendering. These are the drawings that the Cow is being requested to consider tonight.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Mike. Yeah. And, and to this point, we, sort of the number of, it's a number of small things. We added the corner, the brick detailing at the top of the building. We added the bays. The bay windows with, with how they're detailed, we raised the brick bays. We actually added the mullions to the, to the windows. They were sort of larger pieces of glass. We have more divided light to give, again, give it the more residential character. And this is sort of a close-up of, of just one of the pavilions. And I think what's nice, one of the things, you know, once, once it's actually built, is you'll understand these, these, these pieces, you'll never kind of see that last one, but when you get up close, you'll see it more like this. And all of these pavilions are separated by generous landscape courtyards. So there's going to be a lot of, you know, right now it's a very large surface parking lot and we're going to be adding a lot of landscape, a lot of, these deep, these, these are reasonably deep courtyards that'll soften that, you know, you're not living on the main road. You're, you know, tucked back in, in the courtyard behind the trees. And, and Brendan can describe the, the landscape in more detail. And then this is the road on, this is actually across the street from, from Phase One. This is as you're coming, as you're coming north from Townline Road. This is your entrance into the, into the space and into the mall. So we've-
And the space where Phase Two used to be is to the right in this picture.
Exactly. To the right. This is the left side. Yeah, sort of in the key plan, this is the east side of the building as you drive north into the plaza. So the idea is to really kind of create, you know, residential, you know, gateway into the, into the, into the retail environment. And, and obviously with the retail will, you know, with all these new residents here, will have more of a, you know, 24/7 life as well. So. The white?
The white. What's the material?
Yeah, so the white is really this brick. It's, it's this wonderful white brick with dark cast stone. So it has like a-
My mom never used to let me get white shoes because they'd be dirty fairly quickly. So how do you guys?
We have a dark brick base.
How do you?
Did you, see the dark brick base?
See at the very bottom? The splash.
Yeah, it has a splash.
Yeah, but I'm seeing the whole very white above the base all the way up. I'm just kind of curious, as you came to these colors, when you showed us like the northwest corner or the north side, it was, it wasn't overdone by any means. It was, it was beautiful. The coloring was great. And then you just kind of go blah. No offense, sorry. Like the colors are-
I think it's got to get you guys a bit more on it.
You really, you really brought, yeah, let me turn the brightness. The, the, it just, you kind of went away from that theme a little bit. I don't know if that was on purpose or?
It is. I mean, we really, I think there's-
Because that, that, that's what shows off to the main road.
So I think what we're really trying to do here is create a timeless look. I mean, you could say it's trendy, black and white buildings, but at the same time, there, there's also an elegance, that they're timeless. We really want something that stands the test of time. This is a really wonderful brick. You can wash it. You can't throw it in the-
Well, I don't know who's going to wash it, but somebody needs to wash it, right?
Well, the, it will-
But I, no, I understand. I know your materials are very, yes.
And, and the, and the base, I mean, the bottom, I mean, those, that, that, that base of the building is about, is about up to here, which is, which is, which is going to be the dark brick.
Yeah, I understand. And the, the P&amp;Z, they kind of, besides institutional, I believe they also commented on kind of what I just said about not enough or just like limited to just two colors here, or introducing another color than from the original.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, we, I mean, we do, we, we've looked at this for quite a while. And then there are, there are multiple colors on there. I mean, there's, there's the two bricks and then there's, there's two panel colors. So there's, this essentially has four colors on the project.
I, I can help clarify that too. And I, you know, with this design vocabulary, I don't think we want a third color on, at least this portion of the facade. But what the commission members were saying were they want, they want to, they want a different color in place of the white. Less white, more of a different color rather than introducing a third color.
And breaking up those three verticals.
Exactly.
So did you address that at all after they'd asked for?
A different color.
A color other than white? Is there some, something that you've discussed with your team?
I mean, we, we did discuss different, different shape, different, I mean, we're looking at whites, we're looking at grays. We were looking at, you know, sort of rangy whites. And this, and this was, the, the, the team, the development team kind of kept coming back to this, this color that they were really, and we had, we actually, for the P&amp;Z, we did show, to be fair, we did show a lot of examples that we've had many pictures of the brick in action. And this is a, it's a, it's a, it's a creamy white brick that, you know, as the light hits, it changes colors, you know. It'll reflect the orange, you know, the orange sunsets. And it'll, the dawns will be, you know, it'll be a different color in the morning. It'll be a different color in the evening. And it'll be a different color in the middle of the day.
Were the, the dark, where the entrances are in between the white buildings, were those originally white or were those?
Those, those have been panel, those have been the, the darker panels all along. Yeah. And we, and we have those boards here as well.
Those were, I actually do think that those were white because that was another piece that came up. And the reason this, this image here is in this presentation is because- because that was, that was a point.
You know, you are right.
Specifically for the east side, right?
The, the top has been, yeah, but we, these, the, the two-story pieces used to be white and we, and we broke those off. So we introduced more of the dark brick.
That was, that was the big move, yeah. And, and I, I came up just because I, there, the images aren't included in here, but we, when we did meet with the, with the commissioners, we did review that, as Andy mentioned, the, the other, the other brick color, which is a creamier sort of color than this. And what we found, we, we also included some precedent images with that discussion. In this brick itself, specifically this Aston White brick, it actually, it reads much different than what the rendering showed, which is obviously it's typical of anything. But I say that to say it is a much warmer color. And in the sunlight, it actually reads slightly different. The, the concern was that it'd be a, a wall of white and it'd be stark and you need to wear your sunglasses. And it's not that. We, we did present images with it. And that came through a little bit more. And, and we did again, have the, the other gray, which was a, again, a creamier, the creamier version of the color. And honestly, didn't work quite as well. It was still, I mean, it, it reads the same, but the color is just not as elegant.
Yeah, one was a little bit too dark in a gray and one was more of a yellow. And I think it was, it wasn't, it didn't read as well.
I guess one of my concerns is that we have a lot of big buildings in the community already that are warehouses, that are tall, white buildings. And I want to make sure that it doesn't just look like as people are passing by that it's another giant warehouse building similar to CDW and-
Maybe you could talk about the wall plane and the undulation of the different walls to help them understand it won't look like a, a building like that.
Yeah. There is some supplemental stuff in the, in the back, I think. I think there's a couple, we did have a couple of street views where you're walking adjacent to the building. And I think to your point, there's, yeah, this was the original, we sort of dropped in. This was the original design that was presented. And then if you want to click through, you know, there's going to, there's going to be, you know, brick detailing around the windows. There's the bay windows that project, that cast shadows. We do have balconies, the balconies and bays. We added the mullions to, to the windows. And then we, the, yeah, there's, there are some Juliet balconies as well. So there's a lot of texture on the wall. And you really do see, actually, when, with the, surprisingly with the white brick, you do see a lot of the, the brick detailing because the shadows are very sort of crisp in the white.
So looking at the, Melody Farms is the Atworth, right? So were you trying to complement the Atworth with the color scheme on this? Because I'm looking at the Atworth right now and it seems like a very similar type color scheme. Is it, was that one of the goals here?
Not, I mean, not intentionally. I mean, that one again, has a lot of, it's surprisingly how many colors. We just went around there ourselves this afternoon. And there's a lot of colors. There's, I think there's at least four or five different colors of the Hardy Panel. And it only has one, one, one brick color. But there are a lot of different, and that has actually, there's no white brick on that building.
But, right, but they use like a paneling, right? It's like a-
Yeah, yeah.
Is it the similar color to what you guys are proposing in a brick style? So we can see it in the daylight. Like when we look at it in the daylight, we see, we know what it's, that's all stark, right?
Yeah.
Maybe they're branding it.
Yeah. And the, the other, the other thing I would add to, to your, to your point in terms of similarity of, of materials is, is the Phase One mixed-use project is actually more of the starting point for the color palette for this project. And, and they're obviously not identical, but it is meant to complement the mall to a certain extent with what's new, but very much so the, the Phase One project as well.
Just the overall rendering?
Yeah. Yeah, actually, you're right. Just the overall renderings.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and Vic's right. We wanted, I mean, the intention all along was to be similar, complementary, but not the same, right? So.
Somewhat kept, captured in this image with, and obviously we don't have the, all of the Phase Two building in, in screen, but this would be the Phase One sort of behind. So this is what I meant with, we have the red brick sort of over on the side in the corners here. And then a lot of this is the Hardy Panel actually for Phase One above the retail. And that's that lighter color. We get into the white. We have a lot of the, a lot of the gray brick colors. A lot of those actually going in now. If, if anyone is driving around, a lot of those have actually started going in the last two weeks. And then the base is the retail that you would see here.
So in Phase, where Phase Two is originally going in that little, that corner, what are you guys thinking? Like what's going to complement? Where are you guys at in that, the corner of Milwaukee and sixty, that open lot now? Where Phase Two is originally going to go, but now it's open? Like what's out there?
You're saying the lot that sits here?
Excuse me?
That sits here on the screen that I'm circling?
Correct.
That one?
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's certainly envisioned. I think one of the uses that we've always considered, and thank you, Sam, because you have more to speak to. One of the uses we've always considered is obviously the residential use. But Sam is probably better suited to speak to what the mall campus is looking like.
I, I think right now, while we don't have a project to present to you, it's obviously a future development opportunity. Great location. And, and we look forward as we, you know, reinvest in the overall campus. That is a, a key part of the, of the real estate as well.
And the parking for non-residential, like customers, you know, they want to come and enjoy the stores and the plaza. Excuse me. Where is, like, where would be like the first parking lot that would fill up for that? You know, and where's the overflow there? Because most of the residential, they won't have access to the residential parking garages, correct? Or will they?
Correct. There, there will not be cross, cross-access between residence and retail. But each, each one of these projects, Phase One and Phase Two have their own parking decks. And the ground floor of those parking decks have been reserved for purely retail customers.
Do you know how many spaces there, there are currently in the, the parking lot right now and how many there will be for customers going forward in the space?
Each one of the parking decks have 100 reserved spaces at the ground floor. And then the ser, the surface parking, as we talked about that, there's, I don't have the exact count, but it is several hundred spaces that's, that are on that southwest quadrant there.
So, I'm just wondering how-
I'm sorry, southeast quadrant. Sorry.
South.
Southwest.
I'll ask again. So how many spaces are there currently in, in the parking lot right now? Any, do you know? For, for, just for the phase, this proposed Phase Two spot, how many parking spaces are there? Are you going to be taking away from what's there currently? And then what are you going to be building for the residential aspect of this Phase Two spot right there?
I don't have the exact current count.
I can answer that for you. And, and we're looking at it as a ratio. Right now, there's a variation in place for Phase One and the original Phase Two. And the ordinance that approves that approves a parking ratio of 4.16 spaces per thousand square feet. That doesn't include the outlots. If this development is approved, that ratio goes up to 4.93 spaces per thousand square feet. So parking for retail customers would improve over the new Phase Two compared to the original Phase Two that was originally approved by the board. And then, and that parking ratio is supported by a parking study that was done by Kimley Horn for the original Hawthorne Row and then also for the Carson Street Development. Staff is comfortable that parking counts are adequate to support the development and the retail use. Because overall, we're, we're reducing the retail footprint of the, of the mall such that overall parking demand goes down. But then again, we're, we're eliminating low-run spaces and, and then replacing them with exterior-facing retail spaces that will attract, you know, a much higher-end tenant, more national brand tenant. So retail footprint is reduced, parking ratio goes up, staff is confident that parking councils support the development.
And for the dwelling unit, it, the variance is to go from 2.3 to 1.5, about 1.5, 1.6?
Yeah, 1.5. And that's consistent with the parking ratios that were approved with the Atworth. And we've, we've looked at that and we've looked at similar projects. And what we found is they usually, they're usually somewhere in the 1.2, 1.3 range. So we've learned that 1.5 for this type of apartment type, which markets towards young professionals, empty nesters, is more than enough. And we've also learned that the 2.3 requirement of a zoning code is probably an antiquated requirement that doesn't, that maybe fit well for an Amly type development. That's now the Milton where it's a larger apartment, apartments, larger space, more bedrooms, but, but isn't the type of parking requirement for this type of, of use. So 1.5 we think is more than enough for the residential use.
I noticed on the numbers of the, the breakdown of the residential, it seemed like about a, 200, you have 256 units, 255 units, about 110 are two-bedroom or plus. Does that, what's the Atworth look like on those, on that scale? Is it similar?
Yeah, it's, I don't have the exact numbers. I don't know if Vic does. But they, it's a heavy dose of one-bedrooms and then two-bedrooms is lesser. And then they, they also sprinkle in some studios.
Here or the Atworth?
Both.
Okay.
But I just, I don't have the Atworth numbers, so to be able to answer.
Yeah, because it's like, I just use whatever, they had it up on the screen, on one of the screens. And, I mean, a little less than half, but of two-bedrooms plus units.
Yeah.
Up to three-bedroom, which there weren't many three-bedrooms, granted, you know.
Yeah. And, and really they're designing towards what the market demand is now. And there's more of a demand for the one-bedroom units, single, young, single professionals, a certain number of two-bedroom units, very few three-bedroom units.
How many students into the school districts do you potentially project?
Not very many. I think we're, we're sort of anticipating a number similar to the Atworth, which ended up being, it's a small handful, maybe three to five. Was it six?
I believe, wasn't it six, Josh?
Yeah.
Yeah, the last count we had was-
Six total, yes.
Yeah, we'd expect to be consistent with that for both Phase One and, and Phase Two, of course. Yeah. And then the, the last thing I just did want to note, Tracy Oppenheim for your, your comment about the parking. The one note, other than what, what Mike had mentioned with the reduction of the retail for that ratio, the other piece is to consider the fact that the original Phase Two didn't have any retail parking. So whereas this existing parking lot here remained open, we're now leaving this existing parking lot open. But whereas previously, this was just residential parking that was being built, now we're also including 183 stalls of, of retail parking within the spot. So that also is a reason for that retail ratio increasing.
Are you going the southeast corner, old Phase Two, for lack of a better term? Are we going to?
Sure.
Keep that as parking for the time being? Are you going to repave that and keep that as parking for now until you come up with a new?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the intent to, to repave it, clean it up, build out some new islands and, and curbs and really make it a nicer parking than what it currently is. We want to restore it and make it a little bit better and improve it until the future where something may change. But for now, yes, that's the plan.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was going to be parking or just grass, like-
Yeah.
Just a field. It'll be, it'll be parking. There's a design for a parking lot, correct?
Included in, in, in the recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission is a condition that if that, that undeveloped portion of the parking lot is not developed within three years, then Centennial agrees to completely restore that parking field in accordance with village requirements. So you'd see landscape islands, you'd see new pavement, you'd see a parking lot as if it was, it would be there for a number of years. So they would have three years from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for Phase Two. They'd have those three years to see if they can develop it. But if they can't, then they need to go back and redo the parking lot in accordance with village requirements. During those first three years, the ordinance would allow them to just simply clean it up, stripe it, as, as Vic had mentioned to you.
I have an idea for that second phase area. It's about like a, one of those boutique, like Hilton's Curio tap, tapestry, something like that.
We, we love all those concepts. We're, we're constantly exploring, you know, highest and best use for the real estate. Obviously, the, the location of the real estate is, is impressive. And there's a great market out there for a number of uses.
What hotels, like one of those, I mean, you've seen those types of hotels would be aligned with what you're trying to do here.
That, that is one of the scenarios that's been studied along with several others. Yeah.
Before, pre-COVID, there was a, you know, the whole hotel industry is still, I think, getting on their feet. I think the board is all aware of that. Pre-COVID, there was a market for business travelers in Vernon Hills. And, and the thought was if it didn't go there, maybe it can go on an outlet, on Pennies outside of the Tiff. But right now, and, and there was real interest that would cater to the business traveler because, not only because of-
AC Mary, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, but right now, we're still getting our arms around where the hotel market is and how long we have to wait before we have an opportunity for that type of hotel.
Okay. That was free consultation.
I'm sure they wrote it down.
They never considered it until-
I wrote it down. It's right. I made, I made a note. Got you.
Are we going to talk about the plaza more? Or is this mostly about the building?
No, we, we have more, more to go. So I will jump forward. Andy, do you, was that?
Oh, I'm good.
End of what you had?
Here are some questions.
All right. So yeah, we can go, Nick. You ready? Okay.
Hi, I'm Nick Igle with 505 Design. We're the master plan architects, which means a lot of this stuff came from some bigger sort of picture planning sessions that we did maybe two and a half, three years ago. Part of that was the moving of the Phase Two to where you see it now. Which by the way, you know, that, that southern elevation and that eastern elevation that we're talking about, especially the southern one, you see 65 to 70-foot wide pieces of building, and then you see a 50-foot wide courtyard, and then you see a 70-foot wide piece of building, and then you see another 60, 50, 60-foot wide courtyard. So there's three of those along the south side. So you never see anything that looks anything at all like a warehouse building. It's, it's really 70-foot wide chunks. I mean, I have a little ranch house in Boulder that's 70 feet long. So it's, it's really, it's pretty, pretty broken down. And then I think on the east side, those two-story townhouse type elevations are really something that's very different from what you see, these walls of residential wrap buildings around the country that are done on the cheap. I mean, this is a very elegant, very expensive material building. And I think it's broken up quite nicely. That's not what I came here to talk about.
Thank you.
So this is, this is the plaza between the mixed-use building and, and the demolished wall of the mall. We're moving Dave and Buster's up to the second level, kind of next to the theater. And then underneath it, where the, the mall concourse used to come right through here. So these tenants right here will now have exterior facades. And we don't really know what those tenants are going to look like yet until we have them. So there's a criteria that describes their materials and their design and their signage and all of that stuff. So that's along this, this lower level underneath Dave and Buster's. And then as you transition over to what's now is the, the center court, which will be exposed to the outside and to this wonderful plaza that we're designing out here. And there's a new mall entry. And the mall entry has a wood look cladding. If you've been in that center court lately, you'll notice that there's a lot of wood accents and wood tones in there. And there's some trellising. And so we're echoing some of that at this entry. And then there's some metal panels, but largely the center of court becomes kind of a winter garden. It's glassy and has seating inside of it and seating areas and possibly some food tenants. And so that you can sit along this glass on the second level, all the way across, and on the first level, all the way across and look out onto this wonderful plaza all seasons of the year. That glass extends as you go south, kind of a little bit southwest, I guess. And then up above is, is stucco with some louvered window coverings. And this hopefully is a temporary treatment for some future tenants. So you really get an ins, a mall turned inside out. And it's, I think Andy mentioned this, we're going to have retail on all sides of this plaza. So it should be very activated, very lively, and be a really great people place. So this is the view. I've walked down to the other end of the plaza. This canopy right here that you're seeing on the far left is the mall entry canopy, and you're looking down towards the Phase One, and then the, the mixed-use building on the right, Dave and Buster's upstairs on the left, and then the retail spaces along the lower left side on the first level. Very active street scene, little night shot. Looks a little burned out on this slide, but probably looks better on your screens. Dave and Buster's on the upper right, retail underneath it, and then the, the center court and its entry over there on the left. And then we, we did material boards and elevations. You can see the, the entry to the mall is this wood cladding, and then there's some, what looked like wood louvers over the windows, provide some shading, and, and basically just a pretty big glass facade for you to be able to sit inside the mall and look out at this great plaza. And to the left of that, going south, a retail space on the lower level, and then hopefully future retail space on the second level. And this is the facade of Dave and Buster's, pretty much their trade dress that you've seen around, and then the retail tenants on the first level underneath. You go around the corner of this stone wall, and then you go upstairs to get to the second level where Dave and Buster's is. This is Dave and Buster's east elevation, and their entries on this east side as well. So that's it. We have material boards here, wood look, wood look, metal panels, some stucco, some brick, some metal accents, and brick and stone accents, basically for, for Dave and Buster's. If you have any questions, I'm ready for you, more or less. If not, I'm gonna hand it to Brandon to talk about the plaza. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brendan Cloney. I'm with Clark Connan Associates. We're the landscape architects on the project for both the plaza and the multifamily Phase Two. So I'm gonna start out by talking about the plaza for a minute. As was, you know, touched on previously, with the repositioning of multifamily Phase Two, we were given a much better opportunity for a larger plaza space, a place that could, you know, kind of more actively engage the community, a place for, you know, to, to give an opportunity for more people to gather. So where we started out with the original iteration of the project was just a hair over an acre, and what we're dealing with now is just about a hair over three acres. So we really engaged that space with the repositioning of Phase Two and, and made it a much more open, accessible place for not only the, the residents that are gonna be around the plaza, but for, you know, the Vernon Hills community as a whole. So I'll start out here in the northeast corner, where the current AMC kind of drop-off area is. And if you've been out to the site or driven past the site, you'll see kind of that giant wall, that tidal wave of steel that's sitting on the space right now. That's, you know, where we're kind of starting our, you know, the, the real interest of the site is we have 20 feet of grade change going from the AMC theater down to the main area of the plaza. So it really gave us something fun to do. I'm from Chicago originally, and now I live in Houston, so I have lived in two very, very flat spaces my entire life, basically. So this opportunity to engage, you know, healthy grade changes was really fun. So we have this, our large kind of sloping lawn that addresses a lot of that grade change in an interesting way. We have our grand stair that comes down through the space and kind of connects through the central spine that goes over to the multifamily Phase Two area. Coming back up to the top, we have this, this plaza area that's on the upper level that's adjacent to Dave and Buster's. This is that Dave and Buster's entry that Nick had mentioned earlier. And then coming down, we have our kind of ground-level retail that wraps around kind of the whole north and east side of the plaza. In every one of these spaces, what we intended was to have, you know, a mix of both kind of large gathering areas and kind of more intimate gathering spaces for, for community gatherings, but also for people that are either at, you know, a food and beverage establishment or just shopping and, and need a break to sit down, or just wanna go hang out with friends, whether they live just across the street in Phase Two or Phase One. But either way, there's, there's a, you know, a multitude of areas for people to gather. So going back to, you know, why is it important that we went to a smaller site to a bigger site? Well, we were going from, you know, two big box stores, basically, right? We were going from a Sears and a Carson's with, you know, no permeability, and now we're opening this space up to have a much more health, a much healthier, greener palette. So what you're seeing on the screen now is pulling back all of the hardscape that was on the plan and showing all the green space that we're proposing for the plan. This is going to be a mix of, you know, open lawns, native and adaptive plantings, all things of that nature that'll really kind of green up the space and give it that same flavor that the rest of Vernon Hills possesses. So this is our hardscape plan around the plaza. So you'll see we're proposing a mix of, you know, high-end architectural finishes all around the site, kind of identifying all the different areas, you know, that people can access to the site. Again, going back to that idea of something a little different around every corner, you know, kind of mixing up the spaces and giving you a different feel around every kind of twist and turn. And then moving down to multifamily Phase Two, we're keeping that same palette of, of architectural finishes on the ground plane. So a different mix of both exposed aggregate concrete, high-end architectural finishes, different things of that nature. You'll see in that lower, the southeast corner, we'll, we'll have a little dog park and kind of a grilling area. Again, just more kind of gathering spaces, but I, using the ground plane to identify different areas around the campus as a whole. So this is our planting plan for multifamily, for the Phase Two of multifamily. As Nick had mentioned before, and as others had mentioned before, those massings along, I, I would like to focus on the south side of the building. Those masses on the south side of the building are truly broken up by very healthy, very densely planted green spaces. The two on the, you know, we keep calling them the fingers. So between the three fingers on the left-hand side, you'll see those two kind of large courtyard areas. Those are meant to be basically non-accessible, just viewing courtyards. So not only is it being broken up from the, from the road, but it's also being broken up from the residential side. So people have something beautiful to look at on a daily basis. It's something that, you know, it's just, it's meant to just kind of exist and, and again, kind of mend with what we see around Vernon Hills as a whole. And then again, that right courtyard between the, the two right-hand fingers is, again, a very densely planted kind of, you know, buffered space, but that also possesses a dog park for the residents, a grilling area, you know, a fire pit area, just another kind of smaller gathering space. If they don't feel like making that long trek all the way across the street to the plaza, they have their own kind of small space within that realm, you know, to do whatever they want. And then.
So is this, sorry.
Yes.
So just about everybody has an exterior view. There are no, I mean, it doesn't look like there are any apartments that actually are, you know, totally enclosed, like you would find in a building where you're in the middle of the floor and, and, you know, you have no windows. Virtually everything here is gonna have some kind of an external, exterior view, right?
Correct. If they don't have a direct view to one of the courtyards, we're also proposing a, a pretty densely planted streetscape to where anyone that has an exterior, I think, to the best of my knowledge of the floor plan, everyone has a, you know, a pretty wide-open exterior view to a, a healthily planted, whether it be a streetscape buffer or one of our courtyard areas.
Thank you.
Along the right-hand side, what we were looking at earlier, we have kind of these townhome areas. So each one of these areas would have their own semi-private courtyard that would be buffered by, that would be buffered by shrubs and landscape and, you know, just be their own kind of semi-private area. Wrapping along the retail facade, it becomes a little, you know, a, a little more sparse with the planting, but we're still trying to engage the streetscape and make sure that there's some sort of vegetation that, you know, still gives the identity that ties, you know, that ties the plaza and multifamily together. I thought I had another slide in there, but I guess I do not. Any questions for me?
How do people get from? Well, the real question is, how about people with disabilities? How do they get to the second floor?
In the plaza space?
From the plaza space, if they wanna go up to Dave and Buster's, or if they wanna go up to the movie theater.
So currently in the, currently in the plans, there is an, there is an accessible elevator from, from the exterior of Dave and Buster's down to, excuse me, down to the plaza space.
Perfect.
So number seven is the pavilion. I, first, I think this plaza looks great, and I'm glad that you brought the landscaping plan, too, around the building to kind of break up that, not necessarily, not in this color scheme, but it helps break that up. Bud, actually not a bud, but I noticed number 20 is like that, what did you write here? It's a sloped lawn. So is that gonna be, so if there is some kind of like how we have the Arbor Theater, they could, they, you know, if you have a band playing the pavilion, they'll utilize that to, so they can see, right?
That's correct.
The concept behind that?
On a, on a day-to-day basis, this pavilion space would operate as just a covered pavilion for public use, but it would also be used for events, concerts, things of that nature. So this, you know, this big lawn, sorry, I lost the mouse on the screen, this big lawn right in front of the pavilion would be kind of the main gathering area. And as this sloped lawn runs up the hill, that would kind of be an overflow space that people can kind of pile on to as, as a, you know, as a viewing area to the pavilion as well.
Yeah.
How big of a space is that pavilion?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I believe it was somewhere around the neighborhood of 3,000 square feet.
So it can fit decent-sized performances there?
Yeah, I would add that that really should be named the Trustee Cook Viewing Hill, because it was Trustee Cook who, who pushed for that. And it really does work well, you know. So if they have events that draws more of a crowd than you'd realize, they, they'd still have a, a nice view of the pavilion.
What are the hours that people have access to this open area?
I would have to defer that.
I know.
To the Centennial team.
Yeah, I was throwing it out there, because I know you're the landscaper.
I, I just wanna echo what you said about it. A couple of these pictures are, some of the pictures you shared with us earlier of what the, when we first saw Phase Two, and what that open area would look like. And I, I can tell you, because I do get asked a lot, people will ask me, you know, what's going on over there and everything, and pictures are worth thousands of words. And so I carry a number of these pictures on my phone. And that particular picture, when you're looking back towards the northeast from, and looking at what that whole plaza is gonna look like, is the, is the one that, you know, wins a lot of people over real quickly, that they think is gonna be a great project.
We agree. It certainly speaks to the, the magnitude of the project, just the overall scale of the plaza itself. The plaza is, we, we think the plaza is a pretty special place, and we're willing to invest, you know, a significant amount of capital into just the plaza, which is non-revenue generating. This is just our commitment to create a place that gathers and, and will keep people. And to answer, you know, I think business hours will, will dictate primarily, primarily the activated times of day. We will have restaurants out here, which will operate a little later into the evening hours. And then obviously, since, due to the proximity of the residential unit, there will, you know, there'll be a darker, quiet period through, through the evening hours. But we do see it as a highly activated area that's welcoming to most everyone.
Are you the, the, you're the, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm with, I'm with Centennial Real Estate.
Right.
Yes.
See, I, when, an idea just popped in my head. Do you wanna hear it?
We, we love ideas.
No, not the hotel, so.
You, you're in competition with, with Trustee Cook though.
You've got, you've got like, you know, almost 600 units, you know, like a store, like a specialty store. You familiar with Foxtrot in Chicago?
Oh, slightly.
Yeah, it's like a specialty store, coffee, baked goods, but, you know, you can still get some like foodstuffs.
Right.
I mean, the demographic would, I would, would be suited, I'm assuming, based upon the, you know, what you're gonna be charging.
We are.
If you've got young professionals, my daughter lives in the city, this place is pat, well, granted, Chicago, but I think you're trying to, you know, you have, you're looking for a more sophisticated demographic, right? People, young.
That's exactly right.
Right.
That's who we're marketing.
So a Foxtrot, you oughta look at something like that. That is, those stores are blowing up all over the city.
Absolutely.
What's anticipated average rent for a two-bedroom?
I'm gonna defer that to the.
Yeah, we have to defer.
Yeah, we, we would expect the, the rents to, to really be in line with the market. I mean, I have a few current figures. I do know, did you say for a two-bedroom? Sorry?
Well, might as well have a one, two, and a three, yeah.
Yeah, so as a, for instance, the average market rent right now is, is about for a one-bed, asking about 2,300 a month. A two-bed is asking 2,900 a month, and then a three-bed is asking, make sure I'm reading that right, is asking about 3,600 a month. So we feel we'd probably be in line with that by the time we open. Obviously, the market's gonna change by the time Phase Two is open, and obviously, as we're looking at Phase One, we're kind of eyeing these numbers closely to see where we, we feel will fit into the market.
Thank you.
Yep. That's that demographic. Yeah. It's right there.
That's why you need to bring in some high-end stuff like Foxtrot.
What, what draws? Like the national chain stores, the big stores, the Apple store, you know what I'm saying? Besides demographic, like, do they look at occupancy rent? Do they look at, like, how do you guys attract them? Is this, is that what the, that's the goal here, right?
Absolutely.
You're building to bring them in because that's what's gonna fuel the revenue?
Yep. I, I, I think by and large, what we, what we gather the most steam out of when we sit down and we pitch this project to a prospect tenant is, is the fact that we're actually doing it, we're executing it. There's a number of shopping center developers, real estate holders out there who have talked a lot about it and have a lot of plans and are pursuing, you know, perhaps ideas or entitlements. Very, very few across the country that are actually under construction. So that usually in a, in a national leasing scenario will move us to the front of the line when there are open buys to be had with some of the nationals. We get a longer, harder look for, for that exact reason. And then even more so important is, is the community. Vernon, Vernon Hills is a great market. It's a great community, and when we can, you know, stop them and have them focus on the community itself, it, it speaks and stands on its own.
Well, I believe what you have is going to be one of a kind.
We believe so, too. And we, we, we appreciate the support from, from, from the village, from the staff. It's taken a long time to, to get here tonight, today, to share the vision with you, and it's absolutely worth every bit of energy and all the blood, sweat, and tears that have gone with it.
Are you the, like, charging stations with people with test loads and stuff like that?
Yep. We currently have charging stations at the shopping center. Within the, within the new developments, there'll be, Phase One is slated for 10 at the ground floor. You also have them throughout the residential. That's a growing part of our business in our sector that we're always trying to stay a step ahead of.
How, how hard is it to retrofit afterward if you only have 10, if we needed more later on as mandates come in and things like that?
We, we think 10 is actually quite, somewhat forward-looking, so we feel like we have that, but it's not terribly cumbersome.
I mean, will there be infrastructure to add more later on, or will it be?
There, there's additional amperage that's been designed into the project that, that has some future capacity for, for be it charging stations or larger, higher-demand electric users. So yes, yeah.
Okay.
I have another question. What about security in this area? I mean, I know there's VHPD, but is, do you have any private security that?
We do. The shopping center has, has 24-hour, round-the-clock security. We, we monitor, patrol, there's vehicle roving patrols, there's interior walking, security officers throughout the shopping center. This obviously will require us to expand that program, of which, you know, we, we penciled up the operational. up the operational costs, and we're aware, we acknowledge, and it does go with the territory. So absolutely.
So Phase One is set to open next July?
Yeah, the, suppose the grand opening, so to speak, for the retail and residential won't be exactly the same, but we expect late spring, early summer rolling into for the residential, and then that'd be the turnover point for the retail shell, and it's however long it takes those retail tenants to open the space.
And then Phase Two, back at the beginning of the year, you had January 2025. Is that still...
Um, it's, it's...
Assuming this gets, starts moving forward, right?
Yeah, exactly. It's based on when we can start. It'll probably later than January of '25 at this point, just based on how we move. It's plus or minus 24- to 26-month construction schedule for Phase Two for the mixed-use portion. Sorry, not for, I don't want to speak for the mall side and the plaza, but that would be the...
Will the plaza be earlier than that, or...
We'd like to bring the plaza on slightly ahead of the residential. We think the timing works out that way. As we start, we can just continue, continue going. And not only that, the plaza also hosts, you know, 27,000 square feet of outward-looking retail, so we're anxious to reappoint that, reiterate that retail.
So Mike, what you're looking for tonight is...
Well, we would look for a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance approving a special use permit, authorizing an amendment to a PUD allowing a mixed-use residential development. Approval of zoning, sign, and building code variations is listed in Exhibit A attached to your packet. Approval of site, landscape, and architectural plans, and approval of a plat of resubdivision on property commonly known as Hawthorne Mall, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet and in accordance with the plans that were presented to you tonight.
Does the board have any other comments or questions? Then would somebody like to make a motion to the extent of what Mr. Atkins said?
Can I ask for some clarification about the interior of the mall after this redevelopment here? Is there, it looks like on one of the plans here that there is still a central walkway between, I mean, there has to be a walkway between the center court and the movie theater and the inside to Dave &amp; Buster's, yeah?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, there is a new approved corridor package.
And that's on the second floor? There's nothing on the first floor then, because there's stores underneath now?
Correct. Because of the way the mall lays into the grade change, nothing on the second floor, but that passes away...
Nothing on the first floor?
I'm sorry, yes. Nothing on the first floor.
In terms of corridor.
Yes, but the second floor, you will still be able to park your car at AMC, walk into the shopping center, and find your way down to Macy's at the far west end.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then, and you mentioned the elevator right at the edge of where Dave &amp; Buster's is, that will go up to that central corridor as well, or there's a doorway right there so they can take the elevator up and go to the, to the corridor across. And then the shops that are currently there on the second floor of the current corridor, are those changed at all, or is that, that's all reconfigured?
There is a considerable amount of reconfiguration that's occurring, because Dave &amp; Buster's occupies 30,000 square feet. Dave &amp; Buster's is essentially going from their location now and being, being...
Pushed forward.
Slightly forward, yes.
North, yeah.
Exactly, yep, north, and that will...
Certainly get rid of the shops on the second, well, there are a few like right next to Dave &amp; Buster's, but at north side of that corridor, are those affected as well?
They are, including the food court area, yes.
So are they just removed?
We've worked with a number, there's about 29 to 30 operators in there that we've worked with to retain the best of the best, move them into their other areas of the mall. So we have active tabs on each and every one of them, yeah, but...
But in terms of that retail space, that's all, that's all gone, pretty much that whole corridor?
Dave &amp; Buster's in the entire upper level, yes. And then the lower level will now face outward.
Outside.
Yeah.
Okay, I missed, before we vote, I got one more thing that just popped in my head. It's just the way I am.
Were you going to go on all your ideas?
No. But I, but I, so you got a lot of space inside the mall, right? Even outside, you have some, a lot of space.
Leasable space, yes.
So you're familiar with pickleball, right? You ought to recruit someone, and I'm not kidding, people are from here, they're going to Buffalo Grove, because that's the only, like, indoor pickleball situation. All the courts around here, you can't get on. You ought to try to find someone who will do a bunch of pickleball courts. I don't care if it's inside the mall, because you can be there in the winter, or do an outdoor thing.
Agreed.
I think indoor would work better, actually, because it's year-round. Because too many people, they're going to BG, because they're the only ones at half the club right now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
That was your best idea tonight.
Fastest-growing, fastest-growing sport in the country.
He's out of dirt.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We are studying the pickleball. Outside the public forum, I would share with you some of the opportunities that are there.
Stuff pops in my head.
Okay. So is there a motion to the effect of what Michael said?
Could you, could you repeat what that is?
Sure.
It would be a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance approving a special use permit, authorizing an amendment to a PUD allowing a mixed-use residential development. Approval of zoning, sign, and building code variations is listed in Exhibit A attached to your packet. Approval of site, landscaping, and architectural plans, and approval of a plat of resubdivision on property commonly known as Hawthorne Mall, subject to the conditions of approval set forth in your packet and in accordance with the plans submitted to you tonight.
I approve exactly what Michael said.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other comments or questions?
Well...
And we don't want to include the pickleball as part in them. No. Okay. Hearing no other comments, roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk? Trustee Appenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markhart?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tim Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Very excited.
Yeah, I think this was when we first saw this, when you first brought it to us, it's such an improvement. Yeah, I mean, shifting that was such a, such a great idea. It really enhances everything that you're trying to do there, so.
We were just in Milwaukee at the Arts Fest up there, so I'm just imagining where we're going to put our Vernon Hills Art Fair blocking off these streets here, I think it'll be amazing.
We got the opportunity.
We love the idea. The plaza is roughly 110,000 square feet, so we've got, you know, nearly, nearly three acres to work with there in addition to the street tournaments.
Streets that we can close off the streets, and it'd be really nice.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else?
Okay, so you said no closed session, so...
That's correct, no closed session this evening.
And nothing else on committee of the whole?
No, we're finished.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned for the evening.
But I see why people like it. Like, I want to play...
Oh, yeah. That was big.
Somebody told me that is...
I did it for three years.
I want to hit a topspin backhand and play football. Doesn't work.
Yeah.
Doesn't work.